Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight for our special meeting. I will call to order the City of Desert Hot Springs Special Meeting of the City Council for October 22nd, 2019, here at 6:00 PM at the Carl Mays Center. Real call, please.
Councilmember Betts?
Present.
Councilmember Gardner?
Present.
Councilmember Griffith?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tempi?
Present.
Mayor Mattis?
Present. Pledge allegiance tonight will be led by Councilmember Gardner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
There is one item on our agenda tonight, and I will take a motion to approve our special meeting agenda.
I'll move.
There's a motion and a second.
Councilmember Gardner, Councilmember Griffith?
Everybody looks like they've voted. Do you not have it on your screen?
Motion passes to the unanimous.
Mr. Griffith, your vote?
I voted.
Yeah, I didn't see you on the screen. Could you just affirm that on the yes or no? No, just affirm yes or no on the mic?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. It didn't show on the screen. I wanted to make sure it was counted. Thank you very much. So tonight's public comments, how does public comments work? If you haven't been to a city council meetings, during the item, you just walk forward, speak your items. There will be a three-minute timer, but because this is a public hearing, if you need to finish your thoughts after three minutes, I'll allow you to continue to go, but I'll have the timer up so that you can see that after three minutes, you've made your point. That's great, but in a public hearing, I can't stop you. So if you need to finish your thoughts after three minutes, please continue. I do have a couple people that have filled out blue cards. Are you speaking on the housing element, Martin? Okay, so you just come forth when we start the item. You don't need a blue card. Kathy?
No.
Okay. Are you speaking in general comments or on the housing element?
I don't know.
Okay. Has nothing to do with housing?
It has nothing to do with housing.
Well, if you're going to speak on housing, you have to wait to that item. Okay. And then I have one last speaker card. Is it Cameron? Are you speaking on the housing element? Okay. General, okay. All right, so this is now the public comments. Kathy, you can go first.
Hi, my name is Kathy Kuslich. I live at 115-115. 550 Cholo Drive, in the apartments across from the high school. I have won three issues tonight. I was coming home yesterday, coming up Choya, across from the social service office, and this kid was in a wheelchair on the east side of the intersection, and this car whizzed past him, missed him by about two inches. So we need that light up there. I know we can't have a discussion on it, but that was pretty dangerous to see that kid in a wheelchair getting almost hit. So if we can move along somehow, push that light, I'd appreciate it. Anyway, second issue, the senior center. The senior center, we have been trying and trying getting people to come in there. There's something broken over there, a sewer line or something, because the bathrooms on that side of the building, that side of the building stink terrible. You go into the bathroom, and it's just overpowering. So something needs to be looked into terribly. And the third issue is by the garbage cans over there when it rains. There's a puddle that lasts about three days, and it's about two feet deep. They need to put two holes or something in that asphalt so that water drains, because it just sits there. And like I said, it's two feet deep, so... I don't see any time, but what the heck?
The timer's not working, but our city clerk will notify you when you have 30 seconds.
I could talk forever, right? But those are the three issues that I want to bring to you and let you know. We have tried at the senior center to get somebody to notice. I mean, we have talked about it and talked about it, and it's going to turn into a health issue real fast, because those old people over there can't breathe anyway.
If you're finished with your thoughts, I cannot have a back-and-forth with you, but I will have a staff member meet you on the site, get the information about the senior center, and I cannot have a back-and-forth with you.
I know, because of the brown bill.
But you'll be very happy to know that the city council recently approved a stoplight at the corner of Choya, and the construction will start at the end of this year.
The end of this year, okay. I just hope that-
Is that correct, Danny? Oh, Danny's not here tonight.
I just hope the kid makes it through to the end of the year.
Well, it's been long needed, and it has to go through the proper engineering, so-
Like I said, that kid was missed by two inches, and that's not correct.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Cameron? Cameron, announce your last name.
I'm Emery Anfar. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Cameron, last name is Emery Anfar.
Thank you.
I came all the way from Beverly Hills. What happened was, for the last three and a half years, I had several properties in downtown Los Angeles, so I sold those properties, and I had a tentative on exchange. I was hoping to come to City of DHS as an investor and make money. So what happened was that I spent over $12 million in the city, already cost me to hold five CUPs. Every CUP costs about approximately $125,000 to $150,000 from my pocket. Please understand, as an investor, we came here, at least I came here, to make money, not to lose money. But what happened is that I'd just been informed by my real estate agent that I lost some amount of money from the vacant land out there at the City of DHS. Please understand, you really need to have a deep pocket to do the development, especially with medical canopies. Those things are not cheap. They are extremely expensive. As a matter of fact, one of my projects, I was talking to my business partner, and he said it would cost somewhere on a million to a million and a quarter, but at this point, it costs $4.2 million. Another day, we had these taxes that I was, had problem with. They were trying to charge the whole entire 23,000 square feet taxes, and when I asked them that question, I said that the whole entire canopies is another 23,000, and basically the whole entire building is 23,000. So they send the inspector out, and they realized that was 13,400 square feet. So at the end of the day, make this story short, I pay $91,000 taxes for six months, and right there, they said, wait a minute, let's pause. You still owe us $42,000 for a late fee and penalty and all that. So I had to bite the bullet and just pay the city, you know, I had no other way. I felt like I was cornered. However, this thing, we could put it in our past and move on, but we need to welcome people like me, you know, as an investor, you know, and have them come and develop. Look at all these vacant lands out there. You guys should have been making tremendous money, a lot of money on a daily basis, but maybe only six, seven, 10 companies out there, instead of 300 or 200 companies out there. Look at other cities. They really do welcoming other people. They welcoming the investors, you know, not every time when I come over here, it's like they building a wall that asking me to jump a hoop and jump a wall and do some other things, you know?
Three minutes.
I hope that you guys could realize that, you know, we all here to make money and-
All right, three minutes is up. Please see some of our staff members and get your information to them so that we can get a better understanding of what you're talking about and get back to you, okay?
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, does anybody else would like to speak on items today that are not on the agenda? Eddie? Now, you know you have to fill out a blue card. You live here. You still have to fill one out?
Councilmembers, city officials, and residents, at the Desert Hot Springs Middle School, they do not have a crosswalk there. Those kids are living dangerously, and a lot of people speeding by on two bunch. I almost got hit on the right door and the left door. But if you can assign somebody maybe to, however they do for the crosswalk, it'd be safety for the children there. There's not even a teacher out there to help the kids walk across the street, but it gets pretty dangerous right there, and I just want to make comment.
Thank you very much. Last call. Anyone want to make... Martin, are you speaking on the housing element, or are you making a general comment?
I am speaking in general, so if you're going to address that now.
Sure.
My name is Martin Carrion. I reside in Desert Hot Springs. As I go through meeting after meeting, there is no uniformed inspector or list of codes, like the Uniform Plumbing Code, the National Electrical Code, the sprinkler codes. It's all vague when I read all that, and I figured that the city should at least have a standard set. Just as I went over to Palm Springs, they have cut sheets for almost every item. The reason I'm speaking on that, because you have an item coming up pretty soon that's a big, big taxing for the city, and I want to make sure that the city's prepared for that. And it's vague on the engineering aspect, so these are uniform codes that the engineers of the United States utilize, the plumbing code and electric code, and we should have that listed, because if you have inspectors, you should have the inspectors online to be expert in those fields, and if you don't, then that could put more liability towards the city of Desert Hot Springs. That's my comment.
Thank you.
And I think one more, but I don't know how to encompass this, but as I read the government code and a lot of these things, there is no code that, and I'm going to read the code to you, is Division 4655, and it's called the Veterans Housing and Homeless Prevention Act, and it was put in in December of 2004. And the code that the city should be interested in is 787.002-987.005. The reason I'm putting this out in front is because as I read, there's a little, the government code is a very large document, and as it is sworn in to upheld the state regulations and all that, I want to make sure that that's put on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call. Closed public comments tonight. We'll move on to the public hearing. At this time, we'll take item number one, which is 2013 through 2021, housing element update and negative declaration. Before Rebecca Demming gives the report, our city attorney is going to speak briefly on why we're having a special meeting today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The reason why we're having this special meeting tonight is to ensure that the housing element gets adopted timely. We are under a settlement agreement. We have, the city entered into a settlement agreement and a stipulated judgment whereby the city shall by October 31 of this year, adopt a housing element covering the 2013 to 2021 planning period, and so that is why we are here today at the special meeting. Last week, was it last week? Been the week before. Whenever we did planning, planning also, we took this to the Planning Commission as well, and they did recommend approval of the housing element. So that is why this has been kind of a strict timeline. We are trying to comply, not only with the settlement agreement, but also with the stipulated judgment.
Thank you very much. We'll move to the staff report this time. Rebecca Demming, our Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mayor, council. As mentioned by our city attorney, on October 8, 2019, the Planning Commission did review this housing element, following a public hearing, and did recommend city council approval. This housing element is an analysis of our community's housing needs for all income levels and strategies to respond to those needs. It is one of mandatory elements as required by state law. In particular, this is one that is required to get certified through HCD, Housing and Community Development, with the state of California. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Jose Rodriguez to give a full presentation and go into detail this particular housing element that covers the planning period 2013 to 2021. He is with MIG, our consultant that we hired to prepare this document. Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez, it's all yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Mattis, and members of the city council. Again, my name is Jose Rodriguez, and I work with MIG, and we are assisting the City of Desert Hot Springs not only prepare the housing element, we're also preparing the general plan update. But the reason why we are here is the housing element, and I'll go in a little bit in detail why we are here, why the housing element is being updated separately from the general plan, and go over some of the details that the state, particularly the Housing and Community Development Department, is requesting the city to do. So real briefly, our agenda is, I'm going to go briefly talk about what the housing element is. I'm going to talk about what's called RENA, or the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. I'm going to talk about the housing element, public engagement. We'll talk about the process on updating the housing element and the process, basically the coordination we've been doing with HCD, with the state. I'll briefly talk about the secret documentation that's required for updating and adopting the housing element. And lastly, I'll give a status on where we're at with the general plan update. So with that, I'll start with what is the housing element. So as Rebecca stated, the housing element is a state-required component of the general plan. It is one of seven required elements, but as Rebecca stated, this is the only element that requires certification from the state, particularly the Housing and Community Development Department, which at this point I'll refer to as HCD. Real briefly, the housing element really states goals, policies, and implementation programs that really are aimed to improve and develop housing in the city. And this is only specifically in the city of Desert Hot Springs. It does identify existing housing programs, existing housing conditions, as well as projected housing, projected housing demand in the future. It also identifies particular sites where the city can accommodate housing. Real briefly, I think the important part of the housing element is that the housing element doesn't require the city to build housing or finance the construction of housing. It just requires the city to be able to accommodate housing through your zoning code. So that's one of the key components of the housing element, and we'll go into some detail through my presentation. Again, as we talked about, it's the one element that needs to be certified by HCD, and most importantly, as we're doing the general plan update, the housing element must be consistent with the remainder of the general plan, with the other general plan elements. A little bit of housing facts and the process with state law regarding housing. There are various cycles as cities throughout California update their housing element. We are currently towards the end of what's called the fifth cycle, so the housing element that was actually supposed to be updated and approved and adopted back in 2014, at this time, the city did not update it at that time, so we're catching up. We're updating and adopting what's called the fifth cycle, so between 2013 and 2021, obviously, we are entering 2020 within a couple of months. State law, if a city adopts a housing element on time, they can update it every eight years. But since the city unfortunately did not update it back in 2013, they fall within, an extra housing element has to be adopted, so it's called the four-year update. So previously, before, I think back in 2000, late 2000, let me go back, I think 2008, that housing elements were required to be updated every four years, but then new laws passed in 2010 that required the housing, that allowed housing elements to be updated every eight years. And just to keep in mind, the sixth cycle is coming up fairly quickly. In October 21, the sixth cycle, RENA, and housing elements have to be adopted at that time, so that's a couple of years from now. So this process will begin over again. Housing element content, just real briefly, the housing element contains important components that really measure existing conditions, the needs assessment in the housing element talks about, looks at demographic, existing housing, income levels, the different groups, population groups that are in the city. There's a constraints to development, so it looks at government constraints, land values, even environmental constraints such as faults and FEMA flood zones, and those are all, these are all in the housing element. There's another section that's called a resource and sites inventory, and that's where we identify where the city can accommodate the housing sites that the RENA requires, and I'll go into a little bit of detail in a moment on that. And then the housing element also does look at the previous housing element, what programs were adopted in the previous housing element, and what's been accomplished up to date. And you take all those big four components that's on the slide, and that gets us our housing plan. And the housing plan includes the goals and policies, but what's important is the implementation measures that help implement those goals and policies. And we'll go through and talk about that in a bit as well. The appendix does have a detailed inventory that identifies all the sites where housing can be accommodated to meet the RENA, and it includes APN numbers, general plan categories. And for this general plan, it's using the older zoning as part of the general plan update, and I'll go through in a little bit. We are updating the zoning map and zoning districts, and I'll talk about, there is another housing element that will come along with the general plan, they'll update the zoning information, so I'll talk about that in a moment as well. All right, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. So briefly, kind of go over this. Basically, the state requires each city to be able to accommodate a number of housing within each cycle, and these RENA numbers, or these number of housing, are also based on income levels, so there's various income levels. And income levels are based off the Riverside County median income, and also based off the size of a household. And so you'll see on the slide, there's various levels of income. There's extremely low, very low, lower, and median, and again, those are based off the area median income and the number of persons per household. So the state does provide a number of housing units that the city must accommodate. SCAG, the Southern California Association of Government, is actually responsible for distributing that number and calculating the methodology and the number of housing units each city is required to accommodate. So you can see the 2013-21 housing period, there was at least 4,000 units that were required to be accommodated through zoning, through your zoning districts, specific plans or previous projects to accommodate. Now, keep one thing in mind, so there was 4,000 units, the previous housing element, the 2008 and 2013, at that time, some of the zoning changes that were required in that housing element weren't completed, and so there's what's called the rollover. So additional units, going back from the 2008, 2013, what's called the four cycle, some of those units, well, I shouldn't say some, 3,000-plus units had to be rolled over. So this element, at this point, is accommodating at least 7,000 units, and again, these are all units that need to be accommodated by the city as required by state law and what's being required by HCD. So how do we meet the RENA numbers? So there's three approaches that we took to meet these RENA numbers. One is through credits. And what do I mean by credits? Credits are development between 2006 and 2018, development that's been built that meets those income categories. And so if you know, there's several affordable housing projects that have been met, so between 2006 and 2018, I think there was about 300 or a little under 300-plus units that were taken off that 7,000 unit, so not a very lot, or not a lot of units, and also, the recession probably had a large part to do with it, and that slowed housing development at that time. So taking off the credits, then we looked at approved projects that the city has approved, and those could be specific plans, because specific plans are an implementation tool of the general plan and act as a zoning component to the general plan. So we use specific plans that have been adopted by the city to accommodate a lot of, I shouldn't say a lot, but a lot of the RENA numbers, up to that 7,000 units. And again, specific plans are adopted by city council, they do have their own environmental impact report, and specific plans are required to have an infrastructure component to the specific plans that show how they can provide capacity for sewer and water and other infrastructure for that particular project. Keep in mind, though, even though a specific plan is adopted, there are some subsequent permits that they sometimes have to get, and that's, one example would be like a tentative tract map. In fact, any property that, as you know, that wants a subdivide, has to get a tentative tract map, and so that's not a knockoff on, as HCD reviews it, they can still get a tentative tract map and other development permits to build, but the specific plan provides the zoning and allows the city to allocate some of the RENA numbers to that specific plan for the number of housing units that's identified in that specific plan. And then lastly, we weren't able to cover all of the units through the specific plans or credits. We told HCD that we are going to rezone particular properties to accommodate the remaining amount of units, and as you know, we're going through our general plan update. You reviewed a land use plan earlier, or should say late spring or early summer, an affirmed, you guys didn't adopt a land use plan, but we looked at a land use plan that the EIR is analyzing for our general plan update. Based off those land use changes, we were able to prepare a zoning map that's consistent with the general plan land use and shows where those zoning changes are being made, and we're able to accommodate the remaining RENA numbers based on those zoning changes. The Program 1 of the housing element, one of the implementation measures, requires the city that they will update their zoning map to accommodate the RENA numbers, and we are doing that. Real quickly, on the screen, it just shows the identification of where the specific plans are at, as well as the sites that'll be zoned, that are, that we will be rezoning, and I'll have a schedule showing when the general plan and the zoning map will be coming before you, as well as the Planning Commission. The different green and blue are the different sites that accommodate the older rollover units that I talked about, as well as the current housing element cycle that we are looking at. And as you can see, a lot of the rezoning will take place along the corridor where we know that there's infrastructure located. All right, so public engagement. Part of the general plan process, as well as the housing element, we've done some community workshops to hear the public on what are some of the ideas and issues related to housing, but also land use and the other components to the general plan, circulation and public safety. And we did have a third community workshop that was solely focused on the housing element itself that we actually did last month. So a little over a year ago in May 2018, we had a community workshop primarily to identify issues with the land use, with the general plan, and the community did identify opportunities for possibly mixed-use development along some of the major corridors. How can we accommodate additional housing for different segments of the community, different economic segments, and maybe identifying housing at strategic locations, not just spreading the development out, particularly multifamily, but maybe more in the urban areas closer to schools and commercial centers. The second workshop, we had a little, less than a year ago, and that one targeted the land use changes that we were making. This was before we brought forth the land use plan to you. We make sure that we had the community identify particular areas where they wanted to see mixed use, where they want to see development changes, where more commercial could happen, not just housing, but it was looking at the land use plan holistically and what changes we could make to the land use plan. And some of the comments we had was, again, allowing mixed use along some of the corridors to provide flexibility. We know that retail and commercial over the long term, and the general plan's a 20-year plan, unfortunately, commercial retail is on a downward trend, but services will still be needed, but retail, just retail sales is on a downturn, so allowing some mixed use for residential and commercial. So allowing some mixed use, where residential and commercial might be an opportunity. And the community, some of the comments in the workshop were okay with that. And then identifying particular nodes where mixed use or higher density housing, multifamily housing would be allowed, more again in the urbanized area. In September of last month, we had the housing element workshop. Couple of comments that we did had was possibly looking at some of the older or abandoned motels and possibly repurposing those to affordable housing, maybe allow some public services to be included. There's a couple of comments on maybe allowing the tiny house concept, something that talked about, that's been implemented elsewhere in the Coachella Valley. We talked about what zoning districts that might be possibly, that might be appropriate, and maybe for the next housing element, that's something that we can look into incorporating. And then how can the city encourage more affordable housing through grants, through density bonuses? The key thing is that having a housing element that's not compliant, you're missing out on state grants that could help with various affordable housing projects, but also other types of projects, transportation projects and so forth. So some state granting, state grants are being missed at this time because you're out of compliance with the housing element. All right, with that, let's talk about real briefly the schedule of the housing element, what we've done thus, where, how this, how it's come across and where we're at at the moment. So we've submitted the first draft of the housing element to HCD back in April of 2019, so early this year. We had several meetings with them as they reviewed the housing element thoroughly. They looked at all sections of the housing element and provided us a list of things that they requested us to do. So one of the main things that they've asked us to do is since the city did not update the housing element on time in 2013, we no longer, the city doesn't qualify for the eight-year window to prepare the next housing element. You now go back to a four-year window. So the state has asked you to go ahead and update two housing elements. One is the four-year update, and the second one is the fifth, the fifth cycle. The two elements are going to be very similar. The key differences is that the second element that we're going to adopt with the general plan has to include progress of some of the programs that has been identified in the housing element. And that key one is program number one, rezoning to allow for the units to be accommodated in your new zoning map. So when we bring the general plan, the zoning map, the updated zoning districts, those will be included in adoption for the general plan, as well as the new housing element that shows that the new zoning districts are there. So that is a progress that we're making for the next housing element. So it's just minor adjustments to that next housing element. So it's a little bit, a little bit work on your part. This housing element that we're adopting today will not be certified by HCD, but it is required so that the fifth cycle gets certified. Because they want to, they're requiring us the two, because you've missed the adoption date of 2013. So there's two housing elements. So we're adopting the first one that's required by HCD, but also to meet the settlement timeline that Jennifer talked about earlier by the end of October. And then we'll bring the second, what we're calling the, what we're calling the fifth cycle of the housing element along with the general plan and the zoning map. We did receive the final findings and the final letter from HCD on June 2019, in June 2019, and they did find this process. We have to take the two housing elements forward and be adopted. So again, just to repeat, the first action is adopt the first housing element, the four-year update. Again, it will not be certified by the state. But the second housing element, which we'll bring forward, we're looking at the beginning of next year, hopefully in January, early February to the planning commission, and shortly thereafter with entire general plan, the fifth cycle. And that's the housing element that will be certified, and that will get you up to date. And then a couple of years later, you'll be working on the sixth cycle of the housing element. The key stipulation by HCD is the two housing elements cannot be adopted concurrently. So that's why we're bringing this one now and the next one later, because we need to make progress, and that progress is the zoning changes that we'll bring forward. So real quickly, this is a status matrix, and I apologize, it's a little bit hard to read. But this is a static matrix that you can download from HCD. It did show that we submitted a draft housing element. It shows that it is out of compliant, but there is a draft statement, or there's an identification that a draft element has been identified. I think the key thing, if you go all over, scroll over to the right, it says whether a rezone was included. And if you look under, it says yes. That is what HCD, that's the key thing that HCD is looking for, is making sure that you are, that the city is going to rezone to accommodate those housing units. And then as part of the general plan update, which will still go through public hearings, planning commission and city council with the land use plan, that will have the zoning, the zoning map, as well as the zoning text changes, which I'll go through in a little bit. Okay, the first housing element, as Rebecca had mentioned, we took it to the planning commission on October 8th. We are now on October 28, 22nd today for the city council adoption for this first housing element. The second housing element, as I mentioned several times, we're looking at February 2020 to bring to the planning commission and then to the city council. Keep in mind, we're going to prepare a full environmental impact report that looks at the entire general plan, the new housing element and the zoning changes, as well as the zoning map. So that, we're looking at to release that the general plan and the EIR either the end of this month or early November. So we are almost, we're almost there. Real briefly, the SECO documentation, just for this first, so every element does need to be reviewed by SEQA. Since unfortunately, since we're adopting this before the general plan, we couldn't include it as part of the EIR, so we did do an initial study. And since this is just a policy document, it's not requiring the construction of any projects. It's again, a policy document that does show that the general plan land uses will accommodate the Rena numbers and the housing units. The EIR for the next housing element will be in an in-depth SEQA document. It would be a fairly large EIR environmental impact report, but it'll actually look at all of the new development proposed through the general plan and the housing element. So with the analysis of this housing element, we are recommending a negative declaration. All right, real briefly, I wanted to just talk about the general plan. I think I hit some of the key points. But for those who are not familiar, the city is currently updating their general plan that is a little, it's, I shouldn't say a little bit, but some components are outdated. It will include an introduction, land use, mobility or circulation and infrastructure, and economic development element. It will include the new housing element, so it'll be basically a revision to the housing element we're bringing forth, but it'll identify the, now the new zoning information into the housing element. It'll have an open space element, and health, health and wellness element, and a safety and noise element. Again, this is the draft land use plan that the city, or the city council not, did not adopt, but affirmed so that the EIR can analyze this particular plan. And then we are updating a new zoning map that only covers the city part. The city does not have to cover the sphere of influence, but this zoning map will be consistent with the general plan land use map, as well as the housing element. So again, that consistency requirement for all the general plan elements, we're ensuring that that is taking place. And again, not only are we updating the zoning map, we are updating, there's going to be new mixed-use districts, so there'll be zoning standards for the mixed-use districts, and that the new multifamily zoning districts are also included as well, so that's inconsistent with the general plan. And then just to repeat again, we're hoping to bring the entire general plan, zoning, and updated housing element in February, and hopefully by March to the city council. So that includes my presentation. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Rebecca, and I'll be here to answer any questions.
I don't have anything to add. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Before we get into questions, I'd just like to add this for public knowledge. Earlier this year, Governor Newsom called out all the cities that were out of compliance. And myself and the city manager were invited to Long Beach, along with 47 other mayors. Only 17 of us showed up to listen to what he had to say with housing and community development department. When we arrived, as I said, 17 mayors were there. The governor arrived and gave a little speech on what he wants to do in the future on housing in the state of California. And that he was going to, he was very nice about it, but basically forced everyone into compliance. City Desert Hot Springs, the reason that I went with the city manager was to explain our situation here in Desert Hot Springs. The reason we were out of compliance for so many years was financial, basically. But we had already started the process two years ago to update our housing element and general plan. So it wasn't fair for him to threaten lawsuits against our small city. He had just finished suing Long Beach. So with that said, we were able to compromise in that meeting with housing community development department about how we're going to move forth. The governor did agree with other cities that had the same type of story as I did. There were cities that actually have to go to the voters for their housing compliance, and the voters continued to vote it down. It was out of the city council's condition to be able to implement that housing plan, because the voters would never vote for it, even though it was in compliance with state law. So there's a bunch of different stories out there. We were all not in the same boat as the city of Long Beach, who said, we were not going to be in compliance, we're going to do it our way, and sued by the state of California. So with that said, I think the governor backed off a little bit on some of the pressures that were put on by different groups in the state of California. And we were able to have our case heard, and we're moving forth. As stated, we adopted the first housing element that we were out of compliance with. We're working on our second one, and we'll be in full compliance after this. And what I also want to state, and there's obviously someone at this diocese that's much more versed in this, Mr. Betts, who's been working at the COG level, which is the Southern California Association of Governments, who hands out these numbers for the last four years? Five years?
Eight years.
Him and former council member McKee spent a lot of time up in Southern Los Angeles working on lowering these numbers, and I'm going to have him talk next about where he feels we're at and what he's accomplished up there, bringing these numbers down. There's a lot of misinformation out there about how these are being implemented and why, but there's a lot of state law that backs the reason that we have to do a lot of what we're doing tonight. And to be in compliance, to be able to apply for grants, as I stated, transportation, housing grants, all kinds of things the state of Desert Hot Springs needs, we have to be in compliance. So I'm going to have him talk a little bit about what he's done at the, at the Southern California Association of Governments, and then we'll move on to questions from the city council.
So the first thing, and as our consultant will tell you, is we don't just get to decide how we want our city to look. The state dictates a lot of that. And when it comes to housing, there's certain requirements in the Rena process, regional housing needs allocation. So, you know, like a lot of people here, I suspect in the room, we heard about this wild number that the state was requiring, and back then, it was 2012, I heard that we were required to build 9,000 low-income housing units. Well, at the time, our city had 7,500 homes. So you go, wow, we'd have to build more low-income housing than we had housing at all. So, and we weren't the only city with that condition. Hemet had 13,000 units, was it up there at the military bases, 29 Palms. They were in the same condition. So we all got together and got in on this Rena subcommittee out of Southern California Association of Governments, and started pressing our case. And I don't know if it was a direct result of our efforts, or a lot of other people saying the same thing, but something called an equity modifier was inserted into the process. And basically, what happens is you're up at Los Angeles, and you've got six counties and 191 cities are taking this number that's been handed down from the state and then divvying it up. And well, poor old Desert Hot Springs and a whole bunch of other cities ended up getting really high numbers. The problem was it didn't meet the spirit and intent of what Rena was. And the best example would be San Francisco, where housing costs are really high, but service workers are having to drive 70, 80, 90 miles, whatever it is, to get to their work. And so that ends up, you know, say, this isn't right, we've got to create some housing for the workers where they work. Well, that translates into a statewide number. And way back then, the last number that we were operating on was for the Southern California region, the six counties, was 400,000 units to be invited up by the six counties and the 191 cities. And now the governor came out with a number of 1.3 million. So, you know, looking at these numbers, they're mild compared to what's coming in the sixth cycle. But the, anyhow, so through getting the equity modifier in place, we got the number down to, I think it was right around 5,100, something like that. Big jump downward from 9,000 down to 5,100. And then council member McKee jumped in for a couple of years in the process, three or four years, and he got it down further to what the number is now, 4,196, and these are all rough numbers. But again, through pressing the case that there shouldn't be a concentration of poverty in where there's already poverty. And so, I mean, we could fast forward to the conversation that's taken place over the last year. It's not exactly pertinent to what we're doing here. But, you know, as the mayor explained, and good work going up there to meet with the governor and get that sorted out and let him understand what our plight is. But the, you know, we're having to do some paperwork here that didn't get done in a timely manner, and we're playing catch-up. And so this is all paperwork in a file. It doesn't translate into, as maybe you heard, oh, there's 4,000 number out there, and all of a sudden, there's going to be 4,000 new houses built. And then I'll just conclude with this, is as you talk to council members in all the other cities, they say, well, we got this huge number that we're responsible for, but who's going to build it? Well, in real terms, there's developers out there who do this, but how are they going to build this many houses? And where's the money going to come from? Because a lot of this is subsidized housing, and they did away with the redevelopment agency, which was the major funder of this type of housing. So it's all on paper at this point. It's nothing is turned into any tangible development at this point. And so that's the conversation is, well, everybody will be in compliance, everybody's working to be in compliance. And there's cities that previously didn't have a very high number, that are going to find out with the new round that they've gone from a couple hundred to a couple thousand or more. And so that's what's going to shake out on that. I won't take any more time on that. I had a couple of specific questions whenever it's time for that, Mr. Mayor. But that's basically as I see the situation.
Thank you. I'm going to entertain questions from city council. Q's not up, but would anybody like to have questions before we hear public comments? Before I open the public hearing? No questions? No questions? No questions? Everybody says they don't have any questions? Do you have questions?
Yeah, these are kind of a little bit getting down into the weeds here, but I'm packing page 36. It talks about a parking standard. And I understand in our housing element, we have to address a park, a new parking standard. I would like to get clarification on that. And just to update everybody, typically, say, an apartment complex goes in, and our parking standard in our city is that there will be 2.3 parking spaces per every apartment. So that means each person that lives, or husband and wife have a car. And then the extra, you know, the 0.3 spaces combined creates guest parking. Well, the governor has said that they want to do away with that parking standard and make it something like 0.9, because parking is taking up room that's needed for apartments. Well, that ends up doing is creating a big parking mess out on the street. Nobody's parking in the park a lot. They're all parking on the streets. I mean, you go to places like Hermosa Beach, Huntington Beach, where there's a parking nightmare. So my question for staff is, are we having to adopt any type of new parking standard in this housing element, as I see mentioned on page 36? Or is that just a general discussion acknowledging that there may be some change in that down the road?
So it's a little bit of a mix. We do, as it says, as part of the comprehensive development code update, we will evaluate and modify, if necessary, parking standards to ensure that they do not constrain the development of housing, specifically senior housing. However, the state already has a program through density bonus and requirements that require us to reduce parking if affordable housing is. So even if our standard didn't have it, and we had an application that included affordable housing or senior housing, they can request that reduction, and we would be required to accept that.
Okay.
So it's a mix of both.
So this is the state telling us, hi, this is what your city is going to look like, not us deciding that we would like to have apartments, have enough parking contained in the...
So we can have a standard, but if it's affordable or senior, they can request a reduction through the state.
And get it.
And get it.
Okay. And the same thing on accessory dwelling units, which are basically otherwise known as granny flats. If a city had determined previously that, you know, we don't want to allow that, because now you got, you're turning regular residential, single-family home neighborhoods into... now you got, you're turning regular residential, single-family home neighborhoods into multifamily rental units through the creation of a small house in the backyard, we are no longer able to say, "No, we don't want our city to look like that. We have to follow that standard," correct?
That is correct, and we have already updated our code to accommodate that. So we are in compliance currently with state law allowing accessory dwelling units.
Okay, and so that, you know, when you dig, drill down into all these pages that you guys have put together, and I'm glad you did that work and not us, when you get to accessory dwelling units, that's a done deal. It's nothing that we can take out of here, right?
That's correct. We cannot remove it.
Okay. And then I think that sums it up. That's the few questions I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anything?
I wanted to clarify something, if I could. Mr. Betts, you'd mentioned earlier in your discussion of the historic development of the numbers and the RENA numbers and stuff, that it would require us to build 4,000 units. My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not required to build 4,000 units, we're required to allow zoning for that.
If I misspoke, I'm sorry. It's required to accommodate it through zoning. So thanks for clarifying that. Yeah, I misspoke.
All right. Nobody, no other questions from the city council at this time? And before we get into deliberation from the city council, this is your opportunity from the public to speak in the public hearing. There's going to be three opportunities to speak. You can, they'll speak in favor, opposition, or if you just have a neutral position and want to make a comment. City council will be making a decision tonight, and this is your opportunity. Again, if you can keep your comments and focus them under three minutes, I would appreciate that. If you need a little extra time to finish your thought, we'll allow that at this time. So open the public hearing at this time. Anyone that would like to speak in favor, you may come forth. You can state your name, and you may start your time at that point. Ma'am, I saw your hand in the back. I know you don't want to be the first speaker, but you might be the only one in favor.
I'm not in favor.
Not in favor? Okay, so we're in favor.
I have two questions.
Are they in opposition or are they neutral?
They're neutral.
Okay, you'll have to wait till the "I open the net" part, okay? So anyone in favor of this final... Yes, sir, you may come forth, state your name and your first and last name for the record, and you can start your time at that time. Also, I want to say, if anybody has questions, we will not have a back-and-forth conversation with you. The staff will take your questions down, and then after we close the public hearing, we'll answer your questions.
My name is Gordon Countryman. I live here in Desert Hot Springs, and I also live in low-income housing. I'm also a board member of Coachella Valley Housing Coalition. So I can answer any questions you all might have in regards to what we do, how we do it here in Coachella Valley, where we're actually been founded. And as far as low-income housing, our low-income housing that we build here is equivalent to middle income in most of the rest of the states. We don't build cracker boxes, per se, or coffins, that type of thing. And I'm assuming your 4,000 homes are also not just single-family residents, but also apartment complexes and this type of thing? We can build with the apartment complexes, multifamilies, commercial facilities as well. We would build the commercial facilities first, and then we would build the complex attached to it. And that's how that procedure actually works. And we can do that in anywhere in the city you guys want it. That's it. If you do have any questions, feel free to fire them off whenever you want to.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
You're welcome.
Anyone else in favor would like to speak at this time?
Sorry, in favor of...
Of the housing element as proposed in this report.
My name is Martin Carrion. I guess I'm in favor, but I'd like to have, when we go to February 2020, to encompass some standards. And here's one concern I have. I was going to hand out a copy.
City clerk? Do you have enough copies?
Yeah. Can I have a public one? This is from the city of Desert Hot Springs. They're going to be voting on this.
And the reason I'm bringing this up is because there's a statute in the law that says Tax Equity Finance Responsibility Act. And I want to make sure that the city encompasses down the road, requires a developer that comes in and is fiscally responsible to handle what they're going to develop. And the reason I'm saying that is, I only used Torrance since I lived in Torrance. They rezoned the R3 lots. Before they did that, they left them at three, so they only put two parking garages. The third car parked out in the street. So these are things that the city council needs to keep abreast as they rezone. And if you rezone for mixed use, then you've got to keep in mind, as I owned mixed use at one time, that there's insurance setbacks on mixed-use property. If you have a storefront in the front and apartments in the back, there's a lot of mortgage companies and lenders at the federal and state level that doesn't loan on those properties because it's mixed use. So when you're rezoning, you need to keep in mind, if you're going to go from a R2, R3, or high-density commercial, or whatever you want to call your zoning, this is stuff that I'm in favor of, but I'd like to see it developed in the future to make sure the city, if a developer comes in, like they did at Redondo, and they wanted to redo the whole pier front, they did not have, they voted it through, but didn't think it out, and people started putting items on the ballot to vote this stuff down. And I hate to see the city get bogged down on that. And also, you need to start utilizing the federal, two senators for the state of California that makes sure that these laws help you cover some of the costs that the state falls short of. Now, the governor is fine, but he still needs to pass this stuff through the House and all that structure. But we do have two senators, and you could utilize the federal authority to protect the cities as yourself, as the 17th showed up to talk to the governor, Newsom there, that this stuff is all implemented. Because if you don't put high density, then you have this problem. You're going to have to raise taxes because you increase the population level on a certain level, and you have to have more firemen, more police department, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. These are all shortfalls that you need to keep in track as I read through the housing development or this RENA and all that. They vaguely talk about federal statutes in there. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight. Anyone else in favor who would like to speak? All right. We're going to move on to opposition at this time. Whoever would like to speak in opposition, please come forth and state your name. You don't have to raise your hand, just come grab the mic when you're ready.
Thank you. My name's Michael Lang. I own 59 acres here in Desert Hot Springs for the past 17 years, and the APN number is 665-210001. I recently received an email from Judy Deertrack affecting my property. And basically, I'm in the cannabis zone, light industrial, and the proposal, as I understand it, is to now put my property into low-density housing, allowing one house to be built on the entire 59 acres because of certain other restrictions it has with respect to it being in a partial flood zone. Part of the property, I understand, about five or six acres is in a flood zone and in the protected species zone. Well, my property is right off of 20th and Little Morongo. Very big section, 59 acres of land, that for 17 years I've been paying property taxes on. And the value of the property, as I see it, if this were to occur, would diminish the value of the property down to, well, I don't know anybody who's going to want to live down 20th and Little Morongo with all the other cannabis facilities and the proposed water treatment facility plant that's going to be right next to it, and the 10 freeway. So I'm here today to bring this to light and hope that the city council does not go along with this proposed change in rezoning my property. It's not only going to be a loss for myself, but it's going to be a loss of future income in developing 59 acres right along this corridor that is going to be developing, hopefully, lots of proceeds for the city of Desert Hot Springs. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Deming, on this one. Would this be more of a general plan issue when the zoning takes place in the future?
That is correct. It is not related to this document. It would be related to the general plan and zoning update.
I'm sorry, what was your last name?
Lang.
Mr. Lang, so please stay tuned. In 2020, there'll be a general plan update. That's when you would want to come forth again towards that time for your concerns on that. Also, meeting with our community development staff before that to bring your concerns, if you haven't already, for comments would be something you'd probably want to do in the next few months.
Will I be receiving any type of written notice?
Is there any more public hearings?
We still have the, as I mentioned to you on the phone, you can sign up on our website through the general plan update, and we will send notice to everybody on that list. Any document releases, any public hearings, everything that is as it relates to this general plan process, we've been sending out emails to anyone signed up on our general plan update email list, which is available on the website. Or anyone's welcome to send me an email, and we will add them to the list as well.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Just so we're clarified, the housing element that we're adopting today would not have anything to do with your property as of yet.
Thank you very much.
I hope that's clarified. Also, there was another clarification, and the gentleman that spoke earlier, Mr. Rodriguez, maybe you can clarify this. Units versus housing. The 4,000 units that were required, is that units meaning apartments, or is that housing, actually?
I can address that if you'd like. It is however units we make of it within the income categories. It can be either done through multifamily and apartments, or it can be done through single-family, as long as we're meeting the income categories.
Thank you. I just wanted that clarified also. Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Diane Powell, and I live in Skies Haven HOA Senior Park, right down the street here. And I'm a little concerned about what this is going to do to current property values. It sounds to me like taxes are going to go up, and if they're going to be cutting the permit requirements and fees in order to put in lower-income housing, it sounds to me like our real estate taxes are going to increase. So I'm opposed, but since the state is requiring it, I guess we don't have any recourse. But I would just like to bring up that point, that I'm starting to think, even at my age, that I might be smart to get my house on the market now. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Anyone else opposed and would like to speak? Please just state your name. Your time will begin.
Hi, my name is Sherry Ortega. I live at Paradise Springs here in Desert Hot Springs. I'm concerned because it shows on that map, again, the housing over there on the other side of 62, close to the preserve, and I thought that was all settled with the lawsuit earlier. Desert Sun put that because an old environmental report was used to approve that before, that had gone away. But it looks like you're approving that.
I'll get you an answer on that.
Oh, okay. That's my concern, is that spot over there, because to me, it would benefit us to make that the gateway to Joshua Tree National Park and not put in this housing. And so that's my big concern over there. I don't understand your map. It looks like you want to put some houses over there. And whenever I read that article back in July, I thought we were good to go, and that Friends of the Desert was going to take the property, buy it from the engineer, so he wasn't going to be out, and that we wouldn't have houses over there. But it looks like we're going to.
I'm sorry, the Desert Sun confused you. I'm joking. Desert Sun reporter over here. We'll get you an answer to that question.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in opposition? While you're thinking about it, I'm going to read a letter into the record. Dear council staff and citizens, I am Michael Bacardi, resident of Desert Hot Springs. I want to express my opposition to the housing plan that is being put forth tonight. First, the fact that all the low-income housing would be located in a few areas and not spread throughout the city needs to be readdressed. This forces residents in these areas to bear the burden of more traffic, more noise, and simply more residents. These homes need to be spread in existing neighborhoods to lessen the impact. Second, all of us want DHS to become the economic and demographic model that will attract business from national chains. I believe that this plan will keep DHS at the disadvantage when it comes to attracting national hotels, restaurants, and retail to our city. I believe that, according to the sitting city council member, I'm sorry, sitting council member, that once again, Desert Hot Springs is getting the short end of the stick. I question that needs to be, the question, a question that needs to be answered, are all of our other cities in the Coachella Valley taking on their share of this type of housing? Or once again, are we getting the majority because we have larger parcels of undeveloped land? Thank you for allowing me to address the issue, and I hope more study will be done to make sure we, as a city and community, benefit from what is expected of us by the state. And Mr. Bacardi, he only left one letter. I thought we'd read it into record. City clerk will make copies available in the minutes of this meeting for that. He could not stay tonight to read that himself. Anyone else in opposition that would like to speak? Yes, sir. You got in the nick of time. I was just going to move on. Please, yeah. Please state your name, and your time will begin. This is the last call for opposition. Anyone that would like to speak next, please line up.
My name is Ron Harris. I'm a five-year resident of the Skyborne addition up the road. When we saw the map, it kind of scared us to death. Everyone knows that we're about the highest taxed neighborhood in the city, and to be completely surrounded by land designated for low and super-low income, and our properties are just beginning to recover from the bubble popping several years ago. Other things that concern us is, you know, police access, winter city buses is going to be coming down my street because people that are low-income and very low-income generally don't drive cars. So there's just a lot of questions I'd like to talk to, you know, somebody about.
Absolutely. We'll get you some answers on these questions tonight. And as Rebecca Deming, our community development director, said, you can also call their office and get on their email list to know when the future meetings are coming on the general plan, which could help maybe address some of your concerns.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Did anyone want to answer a question? I'm sorry, your last name? Ortega had, Ms. Ortega had on the map that was up there, why it was that way?
Absolutely. Excuse me. So the map shows the boundaries of all of the specific plans that are being used as credits. However, I want to make it clear for both commenters, it is not the full specific plan being designated for low income. Basically, some of those specific plans had a mix of densities. So what we did is we took the areas that were already approved for high density, and that's what we allocated towards the RENA numbers within the specific plan. However, the map shows the entire specific plan. Now, it's very confusing, as the Rancho Real specific plan, which is shown on there, which traverses across the 62, it's both on the west side and the east side, there is a center portion called Mission Creek Trails that had an amendment to the original Rancho Real specific plan. And that one is the one that's of concern. And so although it's shown in the map, those units are not allocated because of the settlement towards any of these numbers. It fully resides, the numbers fully resides within the Highland Falls section and the section that remains for the original Rancho Real specific plan. Because those do have a valid specific plan and do have valid environmental, those are still able to count towards our zoning.
So I hope that answers your question. There's multiple plans across there. The one you're specifically alluding to is already been documented and is not being counted because it's not part of the high density.
But it is mapped because it's part of the full Rancho Real specific plan, but not in the list of parcels.
Trail is still protected. All right. Any more... Any more opposition? A close opposition, move on to neutral position. We would just like to make some general comments in neutral position of this housing element.
Helen Catron, I lived here in the city for several years. I'm just concerned, is there a chart or something that shows where these areas that are being rezoned are going to be rezoned to, or they are going to be rezoned for high-density housing?
That's more of a general plan, and that'll be coming forth in 2020.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much.
Good evening. I'm Kayla Henderson. I'm an attorney with Inland County's Legal Services. And our offices, along with the Public Interest Project, represent the petitioners in Garcia v. City of Desert Hot Springs. As part of the settlement of that case, the city committed to adopting a fifth-cycle housing element that substantially complies with housing element law, with the limited exception for the future completion of the rezoning and amendments to the general plan by October 31, 2019. In addition to the legal requirements under the state housing element law, housing element helps promote the goal of development of affordable housing in the community, and having an adequate housing element is essential to that goal. We do support the adoption of the housing element. However, we support it with the changes we outlined in our October 7 letter to the Planning Commission, which I included in a packet that I brought here tonight. That's pretty thick, but it's in there somewhere. In our October 7 letter to the Planning Commission, we identified several ways in which the September 2019 draft failed to comply with both housing element law and the terms of our settlement. We also included policy recommendations based on experience of representing low-income residents in Desert Hot Springs and the surrounding communities. The October 2019 draft housing element proposed for adoption does not adequately address the deficiencies discussed in our October 7 letter. Specifically, the draft does not identify adequate sites to accommodate the city's regional housing needs allocation obligations, and it relies on the general plan land use designations that do not currently exist without a program to establish those designations. Adoption of the October 2019 draft by October 31, 2019 will therefore not fulfill the city's obligation under the settlement. And we appreciate the city's efforts towards making adoption, and it is a step towards compliance. However, the October 2019 draft is inconsistent with housing element law and will not satisfy the requirements of Section 1B of the settlement. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else want to make comments in neutral position? You've already made your comments tonight. I can't allow you to do anymore.
I just want to address that letter about scattered housing.
Can I allow? Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you for letting me speak again.
Yes.
Here in Desert Hot Springs, they actually are building scattered low-income housing within the city. We're, Coachella Valley's housing right now is in the process of building eight houses, which are three-quarters of the way done, that are self-help, that the owners themselves are building. And we just had eight families, close on eight more. And these lots are scattered out within the city. So we're not just concentrating in one area. I just wanted you all to know that because that letter you read off.
Thank you very much. Final call. I will now close the public hearing and open up the city council discussion. Who would like to go first? I have nobody in the queue.
We have a queue.
Oh, it's not working. Which direction? Mr. Betts, go ahead.
I just wanted to try and get some responses and some of the public comments. I might have put staff on the spot on some of these. Ron Harris talked about low and super-low income houses next to, you know, your property out there at Skyborne. There's actually four categories of low-income housing that are being talked about. And staff will have the exact numbers, and maybe I'll ask them to fill in on this. But at the top two categories are probably going to match exactly the homes that you're living in now. So for driving down the neighborhood, you're not going to notice any difference. Happens to be a development Sunset Springs where I live, which has turned into a beautiful street, right in the same development. And you'd be hard-pressed to drive down there and tell any difference between those homes and the existing homes. So it's not maybe as being portrayed so drastic as, you know, I think one comment out there was is that there's 4,000 homes being built for homeless. Homeless don't qualify for these houses, low-income qualify.
There's a lot of bad stuff.
So, I'm going to try and do that. If staff can supplement that to help me out here, fine, but that was the conversation we had, and I got that from Rebecca. And the property values, again, same question, Diane Powell, the property values, this is something that's necessarily going to diminish your property, but it may very well lift it, that if you go look at the value of the homes and the quality of the homes that are built that are considered low-income housing. And again, that gets into definitions that get to be complicated, which make up a huge portion of this packet. And then I guess I'd be the same concern for Paradise Springs, you know, what's going to get next to you? And I think that was it. So the only thing I did is, and staff answered the question on the map on the other side of 62, and the concern about, I share those same concerns with you regarding the entrance to Sand and Snow National Monument, and I have the same question, but they answered it for us. So that's all I have.
Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just really brief after that exceedingly detailed and comprehensive explanation, which I really do appreciate, and I hope the people watching got a chance to get through that as well. And it addressed a lot of the misinformation that's out there circulating right now, and I appreciate that. The thing that I want to keep in mind and express to my fellow council members up here as we decide how to vote on this, is to remember that it complies with both state law and with our settlement agreement with the plaintiffs. It creates zoning to allow the building of various types of housing to comply with our RENA numbers. And stress again, it's just zoning. It's not requiring anyone to build it at all. We're making sure, like other cities have done, that we allow for such types of housing to be built to comply with state law. Doesn't bring anybody in. The city isn't going to come in and build houses, build low-income houses, cracker boxes, or whatever you want to call them. The city isn't going to do that. We also have to remember, too, that we're going to go through this whole process again in another year or so. And this is a bridge so that we will be in compliance with law, and that we're going to have to redo this all again with a more comprehensive review, a little bit more detail in the year ahead. And we also have to keep in mind, too, that we need additional housing, additional affordable housing as well. Those additional housing units are what are going to bring us the needed retail that we need in this city, that our citizens want, that we all want. Retail follows rooftops. The more rooftops we have, the more retail we have. So that kind of, that is another way to look at the importance of getting this through and getting it through in the way that we have it before us. So I'm going to support this, and I would urge my fellow council members to do the same.
You or Rebecca? I'm looking for the low-income, lower-income with, calling you doctor, Mr. Betts referred to.
Okay. So as it shows for people in the audience or at home on packet page 47, it shows on table 4-4 what we're dealing with in this housing element for the 2008, 2014, and the 2014-2021 RENA summary. So we have a basically RENA number for extremely low and very low, which are grouped together, of 2,797. We have a low-income category of 1,856 units, a moderate income of 650, and an above-moderate income of 1,817 units. And I would also like to clarify, as what I mentioned, as part of the specific plans, that a majority of those homes are being classified as moderate income, which is what any house sold right now is income category in the city falling under. So they're not building something that's different than any other new house in a majority of these specific plans. Under table 4.5, you'll see that we're accounting for those specific plans a majority as moderate income, with some low for the ones that have higher density.
So, Mr. Betts, I keep wanting to call him doctor.
Call him doctor. Call him doctor. Give him a raise.
That's like you called me when we rode up L.A. together.
I wanted you to continue with what you were saying regarding RENA and those numbers.
I think she wants you to focus more on what is our number when it comes to affordable housing. Is that what you're trying to do?
So that's going to be the conversation in the next segment, as Councilmember Gardner pointed out. This is just a bridge to the next conversation. But just briefly, it's Southern California Association of Governments sent an objection letter to the Housing and Community Development up at the state saying, hey, we don't agree with these numbers you're handing down. So some of the same concern expressed here by people who are looking at this saying, hey, we don't necessarily like this idea, is being expressed regionally back to Sacramento. And even some members on the committee up there were talking about, let's, you know, file a lawsuit against the state. And so we'll see where that one goes. And then probably most council members in the 191 cities that are following this are going to tell you that they also don't like the state dictating how our communities are going to look and how we develop them. And then the final thought is, is that regionally, the idea is to take 1.3 million new housing units and try and figure out how to build those in the state to solve the state's housing issue. And, you know, it's a worthy goal. There's people who are having a hard time that can't afford to live where they work. And so our city, like all the other cities in the region, are having to do their part to create housing in our city. We got a really good partner in Coachella Valley Housing Coalition that's doing good quality homes, so we're grateful for that. I don't know if you can build that many houses, but anyhow. So just, you know, this isn't something where, you know, the council's here, some part of some plan pushing all this down. There's been resistance and, you know, trying to make sure that it doesn't unduly impact our community. And we've made some progress on that score. But at the next time that we talk on this, I can update you more on what's taken place over the past year, or what will be almost two years at that point. So that's all I got.
That was the only thing. Mr. Betts has been on SCAG for eight years. I just started, and he more eloquently can express this stuff, so that's why I asked you.
Wow, they called you elegant and doctor tonight.
Anyway, I lost a bunch of weight.
Mr. Griffin?
I have a couple of things. I think, I know there's been a lot of either misinformation out there or a lot of misunderstanding. I wanted to talk one thing about what was mentioned was low-income and super-low income. And so from my understanding, Rebecca, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but when you look at the housing needs, they classify them as low-income and super-low income. But when we're talking about the zoning, the zoning is not low-income and super-low income. It is high-density versus medium-density and low-density. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So I think that's one of the things, is that you're equating where you see high-density is automatically low-income. That may not be the case. There's plenty of condos in L.A. that are not low-income or super-low income, but they are high-density residential. And you can, in fact, in high-density, have a mix of moderate income and low-income units. So I just wanted to get that out there so that everybody's clear. As far as fees and taxes, some of that ties into this. I know that was brought up. When I look at this, so, and just so you know, I'll know, this is my third time sitting through the presentation. So each time, I get a little bit better understanding of what this is all about. Earlier this year, I attended the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities workshop. And part of that was about the cap-and-trade program for their state funds to provide for housing. It's a nice way of getting some money. So I talked to someone at League of California Cities the other day, and they were saying that in some places, it's up to $200,000 a bedroom to build affordable housing. So if you're building a multifamily unit of three bedrooms and you're looking at $600,000, that's not really affordable. We had someone in public comments tonight state, hey, I'm in business to make money. And to get developers, we have to have ways to entice them to come in and actually provide it. The city does not build. I know a lot of people think the city should build something. We don't build. We provide the opportunities. We cannot participate in some of these grant programs because we don't have this housing element. And in some cases, there are some cities that have received 10 and 20 million to put these mixed-use properties in high-transit areas. And so there's opportunities for us, once we go through this process and complete it. At this point, we're just playing catch-up. So for me, it's a no-brainer to say, let's catch up, and then we can sit down and really plan for the next one. But once we do all this, we start to, we give ourselves the opportunity for these funds out there to help subsidize some of this development that we need, that will entice these developers to come in and actually help us meet the regional needs assessments. So.
No, not this time. I'm sorry, public comments is closed, but thank you. I can't allow that to reopen at this time. I'm going to finish up tonight with my comments. I am happy that the city council has clarified a lot of this for you. I think there was a lot of misunderstanding out there. There's a lot of misinformation put out there because people just want to talk about things they don't understand, and that's a shame. What bothers me the most is when the City of Desert Hot Springs is sued from people that don't know our city. And when they walk out of this city and take money from our city, knowing that we're already going down the path to make this right, I can't build a baseball field tomorrow for the kids that want to play baseball here. I can't fill a pothole in the City of Desert Hot Springs because we don't have enough road money. But we're genuinely going down the right path, and we're still sued. Shame on them. I have nothing else.
I move we adopt. I have a couple of thoughts to make in preparation. I will second.
I will second. Any more discussion?
Councilmember Griffith?
Sorry?
Waiting for Councilmember Griffith.
I did press. I don't think.
We're building a whole new city hall because this won't work anymore. This is, there we go.
Mr. City Clerk, it also stated that I made the motion, but Mr. Griffin made the motion. I mean, made the second.
Okay, thank you.
Is that clarified for the record, Mr. City Clerk?
Yes.
Now, may you, go ahead and read the record.
This motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
It is an honor.
That is all I have tonight. This special meeting is adjourned.